Good evening. This meeting of February 11th, 2013, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Byten?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Downeyhugh?
Mr. Krueger?
Present.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Strelo?
Here.
And we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Bryant Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Denise Philippi, and I am the coach for the Bryant Elementary School's first Lego League team, and we will be leading you in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I'm Anna Demker.
I'm Erin Scott.
I'm Hannah Snyder.
I'm Dylan Fair.
I'm Liam Sasse.
I'm Jackson Keats.
I'm Austin Eflin.
I'm Michael Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see that thing.
Thank you.
What is that thing?
You'll learn about that next.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You were just playing with yours before you came over.
I can't build that. Madam Acting President, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I call for division of the House.
Really great, of all days.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 14th, 2013 as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, it stands approved. Red carpet recognition. Tonight, we are recognizing the regional first Lego League winners. Randy Farnham, Curriculum Consultant for the district, will tell us about the Lego League and introduce the schools. Hello.
Hi, I'm Randy Farnham, the Science Curriculum Coordinator for Dubuque, and I had a wonderful opportunity this year to work with the first Lego League group again. We had a wonderful partnership with John Deere, and in the back Eric Ernst and Amy Jones have come also today to see the teams recognized. John Deere helped us put on the first regional competition here in Dubuque. Two of our teams made it to state, but we had a lot of other teams that also won awards. We had a participation team from Fulton's after-school program through St. Mark's that won participation. Thomas Jefferson Middle School won a participation. Washington Middle School won a participation. Lincoln Elementary won the Rising Star Award for having 100% of their kids participating were first year, and they showed excellence. And Honorable Mention Core Values was won by the Eleanor Roosevelt Middle School team. So we had a lot of winners. One of the reasons we really like this program in the Dubuque district is the STEM application, science, technology, engineering, and math. It's not just about the robot they build, and the coaches will be able to tell you all about the stuff, the project that they have to do. This year's theme was senior solutions, and so each team had to pick a project in order to help senior citizens in their community. Not only pick a project, but actually they build a prototype, or talk to some members in the community about it, and get their ideas, and then present it to a panel at the competition day. The second big thing they judge on is teamwork, which is a great part of the project. You can't win any prizes if your team isn't working well together. And the third one is the robot, and you'll see an example of the robot itself. So today, I'd like to announce the Bryant team. Denise Philippi will be announcing the members of her team that went to state, winning the award for the Best Project Presentation Award at the regional competition. Denise?
We will introduce that our robot's name was originally Billy Bob Joe, and then went through many different transformations, so now I believe we have Frankie. Is that who we're sporting as part of our team as well? Frankenstein was aptly named because he was put together by various robots coming together and borrowing body parts, so Frankenstein is where he came from. He's just one member of our team. We also have Anna Demker.
Come on.
Austin Eflin? Am I close enough to this mic? It's hard for me to tell.
Congratulations.
Jackson Keats?
Jackson, congratulations.
Michael Miller?
Congratulations.
Dylan Fair?
I'm here.
Erin Scott? Sorry about that.
Congratulations.
Liam?
Wrong one.
Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry about that, that was my fault. Liam Sasse?
There you go.
Hannah Snyder. And another member of our team who's not here this evening is Anne Mae Wu. We also had three mentors from John Deere. They were a huge help to us. I don't know if any of them are here this evening, I'm not noticing them, but they were Kyle Running, Jordan Jorstad, and Christopher Feller. We absolutely would not have been able to participate in this wonderful program if it had not been for the mentors. So we so appreciate their help, as well as the support of our families. So thank you for having us here.
Thank you.
Can you squeeze it a little closer?
Mike was here. Oh, there he is.
Just looking for you.
Pop rossy.
Great. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Our second state team was from Carver Elementary with Coach Donna Schmidt, winning the Honorable Mention Champions Award, an overall award for the best in class for all three parts, the robot, the project, and teamwork. Donna, would you come up and announce your kids?
Thank you, Randy. Thank you for inviting us here today. I'm going to start with alphabetically probably Blake Holman. I'm going to come up and receive your reward, Blake.
Dave.
Kale Schmidt.
Come here.
Nick Casevauer. Nick is not here tonight. Jack Coker.
Congratulations.
Brian Keck. Callie Smith.
There you go.
Laney Herman.
Congratulations.
Kaelin Lagnar.
Sorry.
And Sophia Adams.
Congratulations.
I would also like to recognize our John Deere mentors, who, like Denise had said, really this wouldn't be possible without much of their support. They not only came to school and helped us out at school, but they also came to the regional competition, and they went to the state meet with us. And I think they kind of enjoyed spending some time with these kids. Again, I want to thank them personally. Lynn McCrawsky from John Deere, and Lance Sherlock. The other thing that these two mentors did for the kids is gave them great role models. You have some kids standing before you right now that can tell you that they want to be aerospace engineers, or they want to be a doctor or physician, and they've been inspired by these two mentors, so I want to thank them personally. The other thing, I'm going to put the kids on the spot. You're probably wondering what our shirts say, what they mean, why they aren't saying Carver First Lego League. Each year, there's a theme, and this year's theme, we had, as Randy said, we had to find a solution for a senior. And our senior mentor was one of our student's grandparents, and he has coronary artery disease. So we decided to come up with a solution for coronary artery disease, and our solution is prevention and education. And usually, one of them say one, two, three, but I'm going to see if I can get him to sing our little theme song for you. You ready? One, two, three, go.
Go.
Brian, you can lead them better, go ahead. How do you usually start it?
Something strange in your arteries. We're going to call firebusters.
Let the coach.
Thank you.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have board salutes. Who would like to go first? Mr. Speech Team?
Yeah, I want to recognize the Dubuque Senior Speech Team received a record 17 nominations to the 2013 Large Group All-State Festival at Iowa State University. The festival is sponsored by the Iowa High School Speech Association, which is also affiliated with the Iowa High School Girls Athletic Union. So congratulations to them. And in addition, the Dubuque Senior Speech Team earned the E. Wayne Cooley Sweepstakes Trophy for the most all-state nominations in the state of Iowa. That's equivalent to becoming a state champion. This marks the fourth straight sweepstakes trophy the Dubuque Senior Speech Team has won or has tied for in the past two years. So big congratulations to all that contributed to that, to the students, and to the teachers, and those who assisted them.
Thank you. Mr. Strelo?
Yeah, I've got a couple. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Stacy Becker for winning the J. P. Wagner Young Journalist Award. Stacy obviously covers all of our meetings, and it was nice to see her get some coverage over the weekend, so congratulations to Stacy and the Telegraph Herald. I also, you know, I thought the story out of Bryant School, I really wanted to, you know, throw out a board salute to the entire school for the assembly that got the coverage with Bridget Hamilton on Friday. It was just, you know, an inspiring thing that went on there, and kudos to everybody affiliated with Bryant School.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davis?
Madam President, I've got a couple board salutes. The first one is to Principal TJ Potts in Kennedy Elementary School. Earlier this week, we received a notification of some great events going on at Kennedy School, and I didn't realize these were all going on at one school, but I really believe that the more we can get volunteers in our school, the more we can get our kids volunteering, the more, I believe, in activity programs. And these three events kind of personified some of the great things that go on, not only at Kennedy, but all over the district in terms of activities and volunteerism, and doing things outside the classroom. The three events that I was notified of, or March 1st is Read Across America Day, where volunteers can come to Kennedy and read to students, where they'll have a day set up for that. March 21st is Arts Night, where they'll have between 6:00 and 7:30 all things arts, and so they'll have a large gathering for families, friends, and students at Kennedy Elementary School at the school to celebrate the arts. And April 15th, they're hosting a blood drive at Kennedy School. So a board salute to TJ Potts and Kennedy School for going above and beyond outside the classroom with events that help develop character, and help our students possess confidence in things outside of the traditional school. The second board salute I have is to the Senior High and Hempstead High School Swimming Teams. Both teams participated in the state meet over the weekend. The Hempstead team finished 11th and was a big improvement over last year. The Senior High team finished second in Dan Duke Close's 30th year as coaching. Coach Duke Close and his staff were named the outstanding staff in the state of Iowa. Josh Gill won the 50 freestyle individual event, and the Senior High 200 free relay team set a state record and won the 200 free relay. And I was told today that there was the second fastest team in the nation in the 200 free relay.
Wow.
And what makes this more impressive is a lot of these kids, some of these kids on these teams never swam before they got to high school and started participating in swimming in the high school programs. Justin Yon, who swam the anchor leg of that relay, was somebody that worked very hard for four years, started out, you know, not being such a great swimmer, and ends up anchoring the state championship and state record relay in the 200 free relay. So congratulations to all the kids at Hempstead and Senior, and the swimmers, and the success they had at the state meet.
Thank you. I have a board salute for 2x2 Character Education. They received a nomination for the Edison Award. The Edison Award recognizes new and innovative programs and products. 2x2 is being recognized for the new program for schools' toolkits of character. Since 2006, 2x2 has served 11,000 students in the Dubuque schools. It has offered free character education programs in the second and fourth grades in all of our schools with their kind-hearted kids, and kind-hearted kids to the rescue. So congratulations to them, and we wish them luck. They'll find out in April if they win. Any other salutes? All right. You want to start us off with the calendar? Review?
Yep. Prior to that, you'll notice in your packet, the calendar that we'll be recommending for the 2013-14 school year. This has been through the Policy Committee, as well as been made available online for public comment. We did receive, I believe, 65 or 70 online comments with a variety of issues, things in the nature of start date or end date, really with our situation, our buildings, and sort of the climate control issues we have. We're kind of locked in with our school year as it is now currently, also with the desire to have graduation on Memorial Day weekend. There are some constraints there. We have to have 180 school days, 189 staff workdays, and so the calendar is the same as the one presented as a draft. We did receive some concern or comment in regard to spring break, probably 40 or 45 comments in regards to spring break. Many of those folks thought we should use those as snow makeup days. The issue that we have as a district with snow makeup days would be that the folks can't plan on that, so we run into people, parents, staff members, the community, who make plans to travel and then find out at the last minute that the travel's not possible because we're going to have a school that day. Some folks just didn't like the idea of a spring break, and they thought that we should be taking that off the end and ending the school year a week earlier. I think we've heard some desire from the community at large to look at some alternative calendars, which we begin to do here shortly with the Calendar Committee. And the idea that we couldn't or shouldn't take breaks during the normal academic year is kind of counter to what I think we're looking at as far as if we should be considering more balanced calendar, or a more non-agriarian-based calendar. So I guess I would recommend that we keep the spring break in there, because it's just a sort of a trial balloon to see if taking those breaks during the school year is something that, community-wide and educationally, we think is appropriate for students.
All right.
Do you want to motion to give that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the 2013-2014 school calendar and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
We've got to ask the public.
We have to vote on it.
Oh, we have to vote.
Is there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Anybody wanting to come forth to talk about this? All right.
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the 2013-2014 school calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the 2013-2014 school calendar as presented. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would just say, we talked about this at the Policy and Ed Committee meeting, and Otto brought up a good point, that, you know, unless we start looking at Memorial Day and graduating on Memorial Day, there's not a ton of opportunity to play around with it. But one of the things that was encouraging was, you know, Stan and the executive team is talking about starting now to look at, you know, how can we move this thing going forward? How can we make some positive changes in the calendar, rather than trying to do something right now for this year? Let's, you know, talk to the community and figure out what some of the good ideas might be going forward, and then we may have some time to act on it. So, you know, I was encouraged by that. And Tom, we also chatted a little bit about your concerns about, you know, Wednesday getting out early, and, you know, the comments were made were the importance of the education piece that the teachers get. And one of the things I suggested was, now that we have Mike Seize on board, is to actually communicate what the teachers are learning at those education formats, so, you know, people don't just think it's, you know, I got to get my kids up two hours early and find a babysitter, or whatever the case may be.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Couple comments that I had. I haven't heard many comments from the public on this. I know that several years ago, when it was planned, I think it was planned that the graduation was going to move off Memorial Day, and people may not have realized it till later in the year. Did we go back and change that to Memorial Day, or did we have a year where it went?
We changed it before we didn't change it.
Yeah.
Big mistake. We changed the calendar that we had adopted, myself being one of the people who contributed to the bad decision. And then people had already bought plane tickets for places and stuff, because they counted on the original calendar. So then we voted again to change it back to what we had originally. Yeah, that was not a pretty one.
Yeah, and I guess, I don't know what the community, I mean, my sense is the community likes the Memorial Day, but I guess I don't know that from anything other than just a little bit that I hear.
That was the feedback that we got from that particular calendar on that year.
And the other thing is, I generally like the spring break, and I like people having the opportunity to plan for that, but the other comment I would make is that, to the extent we can coordinate this a little bit with some of our district neighbors, especially Western Dubuque, who has a large group of kids that participate in the same activity programs that are outside of school, you know, it makes some of those people that deliver those services' lives a little easier when our calendar matches up, to the extent it can, with the Western Dubuque calendar.
Well, I guess if I could just make a couple of comments. We certainly understand the ripple effect that the school calendar has on the community at large, whether it be those folks who provide before and after-school programs, activities programs, the why, why care, all of those sorts of things. So any major changes in the calendar will be done well ahead of time, hopefully learning from the lesson that Tom related earlier, that we understand that it takes a community structure and system to support any type of significant calendar change. And so that's why this year, the calendar looks much like it has the last several years, and that we will start to have conversations and seek input from the community at large, not only parents and students, but folks who run the organizations that support our students when they're not in school, so that any change is at least understood and hopefully supported by those entities. Ultimately, our goal is to do what's right for kids, and so we want to make sure that the calendar reflects that, that what can we do that's best for kids, but also give those other organizations an opportunity to change or tweak their programming so that they can continue to offer their programming for our students as well. So that's the timing.
I'll just add on that, we've got to look at graduation, and when we hold graduation as to if we're going to change that or not. That is the big key that holds everything. It's locked into place because of when we hold graduation. And so people really need to think about it, and is it just because it's what it's always been, or is it what's needed? And, you know, change is not good.
And it's actually good to hear what Tom just said, because maybe they weren't so upset about Memorial Day, they were upset that they changed their mind.
Exactly, exactly.
So I think, you know, what's the real problem?
All right, any further discussion?
I think you hit it right on the head, too, is that that will alleviate some of the situations, such as semester breaks. Usually, we're having problems with the testing and everything before the spring break, or before the semester. And what you're finding is that the teachers are having to get things prepared, tests, and everything all done on Friday, and then Monday, boom, there's the next semester. So that was a concern. And also, I think that if we can keep the spring break consistent, keep it at the same time, but it all boils down to that Memorial Day weekend. And it'd be interesting to see how the government comes up and the legislature comes up with the new education reform that they're talking about, because that could also play an impact on our calendar for the following years as well, too, so.
All right, anyone else? All right, it has been moved and seconded by the Board of Education to adopt the 2013-14 school calendar as presented. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right. All right, we have got, MVP Services Group will review the projects on Dazel concessions. Bill?
Bill's the MVP.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Superintendent Reingans getting the approval. Just a real quick overview of where we've been with the concession equipment at Dazel. On December 10th, we advertised for bids to supply all concession-related food service equipment for the new concession area. Ed Norman from MVP made us aware that the equipment replacement cost would be approximately $60,000, and I'll discuss the bid tally here later, but you can see it did come under budget. Although the original budget was $30,000, a decision was made to reserve the funds from the owner's contingency, and to date, that contingency stands at approximately $32,000. There's a change order coming later in the agenda that'll lower us to $22,000. But with approximately less than 90 days to go in the construction period, we're pretty comfortable at that level with the amount of construction remaining. Please keep in mind that no equipment will go unused. For instance, there's a couple of freezers, a pizza warmer, and some other equipment that will go to Hempstead until it serves out the end of its life there. So we'll be coming back later to make a recommendation that we buy the complete package and put it in place at Dazel to provide an area that would be safe for food handling and preparation. That's the history on it. I'll yield to the public here unless there's other questions.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Dazel field concession equipment and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
Is there any discussion? It has been moved and seconded as read. There's a lot to hear as you go, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
Is there any discussion? It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open public hearing and allow for public comments. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. It has been moved and seconded as read. There's a lot to hear as you go. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
Is there any discussion? It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open public hearing and allow for public comments. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Is there anyone who would like to make comment on our concession bid? All right.
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Dazel field concession equipment. Whereas, on the 12th day of November 2012, plan specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total costs were initially filed with the Secretary for the construction of certain public improvements described in general as the Dazel field concession equipment. And whereas, a notice of hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimate of total costs for said public improvements was published as required by law, now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education, the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the said plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated total costs for the Dazel field concession equipment are hereby approved and adopted as the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated total costs for said public improvement as described in the preamble of this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
How could there be? You just discussed the whole thing.
It has been moved and seconded on the motion as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign. All right. Moving on to the next one.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract, be it resolved by the Board of Education, the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque County, Iowa. Section 1, that the following bid for Dazel field concession equipment described in the plan specification heretofore adopted by this board is accepted, the same being the lowest responsive, responsible bid received for such work as follows. Contractor/vendor Rapids Food Service Contract and Design of Marion, Iowa. Amount of bid: $58,112. Section 2, that the President and Secretary are hereby directed to execute a contract with the contractor/vendor, such contract not to be binding on the district until approved by this board.
Second.
Okay. Report the bids, please.
Your packet should have that list. The four bids received on January 10th with Rapids Food Service being the low bidder, I'd like to assure you that Rapids has the appropriate technical experience and the demonstrated ability to complete the contract and meet the district's expectations. Therefore, buildings and grounds is coming forward this evening to ask that the contract be awarded to Rapids Food Service. And if you act on that, that contractor over the next 30 days will prepare their insurance and their bonding certificates for presentation at the March 11th Board Meeting. I've spoken to Rapids Food Service, and they don't foresee any material delivery issues with the April 15th-16th deadline coming quickly.
Did we get a second on that motion?
We did.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions for Bill? Okay. Let's see. I'll just do it. It has been moved and seconded on the reporting of the resolution toward the construction contract as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. We are done with all of that. Okay. Next, public hearing improvement project on the Sageville School Mechanical Project.
I'm Dieton Mullock with MVP Engineers. We're the designers of the project. Just want to give you a quick overview of what the project consisted of. The project basically replaces most of the existing HVAC systems within that school except for the areas with the front addition, which was built last year, and the existing boilers in the building. However, we are converting those boilers from steam boilers to hot water to be used in the new system. The new system is a water source heat pump system using boilers for heating and a cooling tower for heating, for cooling. It's kind of similar to this building, actually, but should work better. The system consists of 22 vertical heat pump units, which are going to be in the classrooms. Starting as soon as school gets out, we're going to start setting those in place. The way the schedule is working, all the units should be there prior to school getting out, or right at that time. It's going to be a tight schedule. The contract's going to be starting on May 15th roughly to start doing demolition work. And we should have the majority of the work done by the start of school. However, the actual completion date is in October to allow for finalizing of controls and punch lists and getting the little last things done and allowing the contractor to get in at times when the students aren't there to finish things up. So approximately 120 tons of cooling will be added to the building. And also, because of the cooling addition, we're adding a new electrical service, 480-volt, 800-amp service to the building to handle that additional load.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on Sageville School Mechanical Project and authorize payment of legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
Is there any discussion? It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Sageville School Mechanical Project and authorize payment on the legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Any discussion? It has been moved and seconded by the Board of Education to open to public hearing to allow for public comments. Anybody want to ask any questions? Now's the time.
Do we get a vote?
Nope, we do. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, anyone who wants to ask questions from the public?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to close public hearing and return to regular session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Sageville School Mechanical Project. Whereas, on the 10th day of December 2012, plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated total costs were initially filed with the Secretary for the construction of certain public improvements described in general as a Sageville School Mechanical Project. And whereas, a notice of hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for said public improvements was published as required by law, now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education, the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa. Section 1, that the said plans, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total costs for the Sageville School Mechanical Project are hereby approved and adopted as the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated total cost for said public improvement as described in the preamble of this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This, Madam President, Bill, could you answer a few questions on the Sageville project or maybe provide some background as far as what's going on for the public? We've done some work up at Sageville. This, we've done, redone the parking lot over the last several years. We've redone the entryway and offices to make a secure entryway. This is allowing for a redo of all the cooling and air conditioning and heating of the Sageville building?
That's correct. That building was built in the mid-'50s, and a lot of that piping that's serving the heating equipment now is original equipment. And quite frankly, it's reaching the end of its life. So the replacement cost to do that was estimated at $300,000 or $400,000 just for that project. So that was, that was $300,000 or $400,000 just to replace the aging piping. So that would have had to been done in the next couple of years regardless if we went to air conditioning or not. So now we're picking up the air conditioning, the new, more efficient heating units. Each room will have their own thermostat and be able to control that. The air quality's going to improve, and as I said before, efficiencies are going to improve.
And what do we, at Sageville, we are a two-and-a-half to three-section school and that will be pretty much fully up to date? Or where are we at with?
That's correct. That school with the renovation we did last year is going to be in good shape for generations now to come. It'll be modernized. The roofs were just replaced in my last two years. There's only one other roof, but it's not, it's at midpoint of its life. Sageville's going to be in good shape then for, like I say. That's correct. Thank you. So our accessibility issues have been addressed.
And do we have, is there a separate gym and cafeteria? Where do they, where do they eat?
The gym and cafeteria is a multipurpose room there.
They have one, it's all one multipurpose room.
That's correct. Okay. That's correct.
Any other discussion? It has been, Zell?
Yes.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Sageville School Mechanical Project as read. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract, be it resolved by the Board of Education, the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa. Section 1, that the following bid for Sageville School Mechanical Project described in the plans and specification heretofore adopted by this board is accepted, the same being the lowest responsive responsible bid received for such work as follows. Contractor: Portson Construction Company of Dubuque, Iowa. Amount of bid: $1,269,000. Section 2, that the President and Secretary are hereby directed to execute a contract with the contractor, such contract not to be binding on the district until approved by this board.
Second.
Is there any discussion? It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution making a.
Did we need to do the bid tally?
Oh, bid tally, sorry. Go ahead. Please report it.
Yep, thank you. Your packet should include showing five bids received on January 16th for the mechanical project at Sageville. As you are aware, the Portson Construction was the low bidder at $1,269,000. There's also a letter from MEP recommending that the school district enter into a contract with the low bidder, Portson Construction, for that amount to perform that work. So buildings and grounds, once again, comes forward and if you, recommends that agreement. And if you act on that recommendation of MEP, the contractor will put together the insurance and the bid bonds, performance bonds over the next 30 days. We'll be back in front of you on March 11th asking for that to be approved. And at that point, the contract can be signed, and that would allow the contractor to start work on approximately May 15th with the project planned completion date of October 30th.
Any discussion? All right. It has been moved that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract as read. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Madam Vice President, would you mind a comment?
I would not.
I would, relative to the schedule for the Sageville project and the, you know, variable punch list that eventually comes forward, with Jean McDonald at the helm of Sageville and reviewing the punch list, I just would suggest you're ready for that. Prepare yourself, scour your loins for that. And the second thing is that every time we send Bill and his construction group to a workshop, the motions get longer. Can we review that policy perhaps?
Yeah.
Thank you. That was it. Sorry.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded just by the Board of Education just to suspend, suspend the rules of order and go into open discussion, open forum. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anybody would like to go into open forum? All right.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Such formalities.
Madam Vice President, I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody want, have any items they would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Which include annual financial report, treasurer's report, minutes of committees. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed on the consent agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Where are we on now? Facilities, okay. Mr. Byteam, that's yours.
All right. Madam Vice President, we met a few days back, had a fairly long agenda. We'll try to be as efficient as possible. There was discussion preceding the meeting, the notification of the continuing concerns of the small gym floor at senior, and that led to some investigation and that at the meeting, it was reported that a bid was being, or at least the process of bidding was being secured in order to replace that. There's been a long history, a legacy on that floor, and once the ceiling got repaired, it was really a matter of seeing whether or not the decrease in dust perhaps had a positive influence. And it's clear through, I think, fairly credible testimony that it's not getting much better. So with that, I move that the Board of Education approve Anderson Design and Consulting, Inc. as architect, engineer, and consultant on the senior high school small gym floor replacement project.
Second.
Is there any?
It's tied.
Any discussion? This has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Anderson Design and Consulting, Inc. as the architect, engineer, and consultant on the senior high school small gym floor replacement project. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Point of order, Madam President. I think, do we have a motion that we skipped over on the front page?
Yes, we do. On the front.
On the bonding for, is that something?
I saw that as being at the end.
Yeah, because. Okay. I think the page might be backwards.
All right. Okay. All right. Just. Gotcha.
That's at the end, Jordan.
Okay. I was wondering, it was confusing.
The next motion has to do with the, every year, we have a request for a modified allowable growth due to changes in the special education supplement, and this year is no exception. And so I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that the Board of Education approve submission of the request to the Iowa School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for modified allowable growth due to changes to the special education supplement by the Iowa Department of Education.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Kevin, do you want to add anything to that, or do you think it pretty much stands on its own?
The Department of Education was in last week reviewing the special education deficit. They've been ordered by the SBRC to do a statewide review, so that was completed. During that discussion point, we brought this particular issue to their attention, and they're hopefully going to correct it and make an adjustment before we need to go to the committee. But in case that doesn't happen, we have, we needed to request this and have board approval and have that motion in order to go to the SBRC.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve submission of the request to this SBRC for modified allowable growth due to changes to the special education supplement by the Iowa Department of Education. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move that the Board of Education approve submission of the request to the Iowa Budget Review, School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for modified allowable growth to provide 100% spending authority for the actual ELL program costs.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is, again, coming forward, same as last year. They changed the formula on how much we are allowed to gather for spending authority for ELL. Because of the change in formula, we must now go before them every year and ask for the additional cost or the excess cost of the program over the funding level.
All right. It has been moved and seconded by the Board of Education to approve submission of the request to the Iowa School Budget Review Committee for modified allowable growth to provide 100% spending authority for actual ELL program cost. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, resolve that the Board of Directors of the Dubuque Community School District will levy property tax for fiscal year 2013-2014 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under Section 275, 257.14. 257.14, Iowa, Code of Iowa.
Is there any discussion?
Second.
Nope, sorry. Is there any discussion?
What are we, what are we doing here, Kevin?
This is a request for the budget guarantee. Right now, we do not know what the legislature will do with allowable growth. And if they settle at 0%, we would have to, we have to have this motion approved in order to gather the spending authority that the 101% budget guarantee would have.
So the state law provides that we are guaranteed 101% of prior, what we spent, what our spending authority was for the prior year.
Correct.
We don't know what the spending authority is going to be for the next year because it hasn't been set by the legislature, even though it's required, it was required to be set last-
Last year.
Last year. We're doing this as a protective measure to get our 101% in the event that 0%, that nothing is done to resolve allowable growth between now and when the deadline for this-
Correct. The 101% would be amount higher than our, we had an enrollment growth last year, but the dollars generated by that would be less than the 101% of the prior year.
Any further discussion? It has been moved and seconded by the, that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, resolve that the Board of Directors of the Dubuque Community School District will levy property tax for fiscal year 2013-2014 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under section 257.14 of the Iowa Code. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move the Board of Education approve change order number 7 to Ports and Construction, Incorporated on the Dalzell Field renovation and Hempstead Field improvement projects in the amount of $9,744. This amount is associated with the, providing the foundation for the Berwanger statue, some decorative metal guardrail and bleachers, at the bleachers rather, and then to revise some down spout piping at the West Ticket Building.
Second.
Is there any discussion? It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number 7 to Ports and Construction, Inc. on the Dalzell Field renovation and Hempstead Field improvement projects in the amount of $9,744. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Hempstead High School renovation project and set the date, time, and location as April 8, 2013, at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for the hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Should we get a little update?
Kevin, could you come on up and, as long as we've been working on this project for the last-
Oh, my goodness!
-about year at least, so.
Oh, my gosh!
Why don't you show everybody the results so far?
This is one set of drawings. This is the first set. It was printed this afternoon, we finished up. We haven't printed the spec booklet yet, but it's also three volumes.
That's a dream.
I think everybody's kind of tired. Our team's been putting a lot of work in, but it's in real good shape. We've had a lot of interest from contractors. We're getting continuous phone calls, so there's a lot of suppliers and contractors out there that have been awaiting this project to come out. It'll be available electronically after your approval tonight, on the website tomorrow. And hopefully, we won't be printing more than 50 or 60 hard copy sets.
Kevin, you made a comment during the support services about the cost of at least even printing this for the contractors and the savings that we realized by going electronic, which we couldn't do, I mean, in projects past.
Yeah.
It's pretty significant.
Yeah, we've got almost 500 sheets in the set. And we calculated that for every sheet we were able to save, we were going to save about $500. And the set is about $500 to print, and the cost of shipping, of course, is pretty heavy. I don't know what it weighs, but it's pretty heavy. So if we can eliminate the printing of 100 sets, that's, that's a lot of money. So we expect to be able to save $40,000 or $50,000 through the electronic process, but we still believe we're probably going to print 50 or 60 sets. We just did a high school project down in Muscatine, and I think we printed 75 sets for that one, and it was, it was about a third the size of this. We were able to kind of combine information and eliminate 27 or 28 sheets, and we think that saved about $13,000 in printing costs and the electronic plan room. So it's pretty compact, and most contractors aren't going to want to carry around a set like this. So electronic is, is a must for this kind of process.
More to the point, I know there are others who have involved directly in the project. Everything I have heard indicates the degree by which this project in the planning stages has been very, very collaborative, from, from members of the staff at the school to folks in the public. You had a number of events that brought folks in and allowed them to comment, and I just wanted to, you know, at this stage, it's, it's still fairly early in the process, but congratulate you and your team in helping to manage through that process. I think the public should feel very, very good that this is a very well-planned project.
We've gotten a lot of input from a lot of different folks, advocacy groups, so you're right. Thanks.
Is there any further discussion?
I guess, I'd just like to maybe take a step back and, and maybe discuss for the public at large, people listening at home and people here, where we've been at Hempstead, where we're going at Hempstead. I guess this plan is, what's the estimated cost of this renovation, Kevin?
The total project with all the furniture, testing, all the design phases, about $32 million.
So we're looking at a $32 million investment in, in the Hempstead High School building that, I guess, 10 or 12 years ago, this was started with the completion of some of the initial phases at Hempstead High School that remodeled the educational wing of the school, provided for air conditioning, provided for some new building, redid basically all of the classrooms and the library wing of the school. That project being, and at that point, I guess, a decision, you know, I think the district looked at different options as far as what would be the future at Hempstead. Would it stay at that site? Would it move someplace else? The decision was made to go forward at the Hempstead site. And then this is really the completion of those phases, dealing with a new auditorium, a new practice gymnasium that also can host competitions, a new renovation of the existing gym, and rig, redoing all the tech areas of the building, and an administrative wing and a music, fine arts wing for music band orchestra classrooms.
Science labs.
Science labs.
Several other classrooms as well.
So we're, what I understand, we will, where we will be when this addition is completed is we will basically have a fairly new high school building, but for, the things we haven't touched are the cafeteria, the, the kitchen, and the, the pool. A decision, we're still kind of pending what to do with the pool there at Hempstead. That, we decided to postpone doing some of those upgrades until we find out what our pool study and what the future of the swimming pool is. But we will be very close to having a pretty brand-new, state-of-the-art high school building at Hempstead High School when this project is completed. And a completion of the, I guess, promise that was made when the one cent sales tax was passed to use some of those funds. I don't know if it was a promise, but one of the goals for those first one cent sales tax monies was to complete the renovation of Hempstead High School, and this gets us a long ways, or very close to getting that done.
Can I ask, what happens if we take the swimming pool someplace else? If we work with the city to go someplace else? Are we, do we have a plan for that whole?
There were several options developed for the renovation of that area. One of those was a wrestling area, we'll go where the pool is, and always with the potential to add a floor because it's a two-story space, and expand the dining into it. That's one of the reasons why we didn't go with the dining at this time either, because if we do that, then we don't need to put the dining and kitchen addition on, we could expand it right into the pool area.
Is there any further discussion? It has been moved that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Hempstead High School renovation project and set the date, time, and location as April 8, 2013, at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright. Thank you. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Forum Warehouse Asphalt Drive replacement, Marshall School Tuck Pointing, Senior High School Restroom renovation, and Senior High School Roof and Insulation Replacement projects. And set the date, time, and location as April 8, 2013, at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any questions? It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost of all projects as read. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, that the construction contract and bonds executed in insurance coverage for the Carver School Classroom Edition project as described and detailed in the plans and specifications, heretofore approved, and which have been signed by the contractor, be at the same, be and the same are hereby approved, and the Board President is authorized to execute said contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, Clower Development Corporation of Dubuque, Iowa, dated contract, January 15, 2013, bond surety, Merchant's Bonding Company, for $586,919, and dated bond, July, January 23, 2013.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam President, this addition, this is a, this is for an addition to the Carver Elementary School. The Carver Elementary School was originally designed to allow for two, two classroom additions, one of which was added during the construction phase of the original Carver. This would be a second two-classroom addition. My recollection is that when we did the first two-classroom addition, the additional cost was in the $480,000 range. This, this cost is in the 580, but there's an extra building that's done, so when you take that out, these two, it was pretty comparable to the cost that we're spending to do the addition here and what it cost us five or six years ago when the original Carver Elementary School was built. So, and it gets, that building really has expanded as it was designed to be expanded, with all the areas for growth, I guess, that were planned in the original plans consumed once this addition is done.
Alright, thank you. Any further discussion? It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds as read. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright. Mr. Strelo.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Yeah, we got update from-
Yeah, nothing to, you know, we talked about the, the calendar a lot and, and we, Lynn went over some new testing programs that the, the district's getting involved in, and how they report back are, are pretty interesting because you're going to be able to not necessarily compare your kid to grade level. You can compare it for improvements, you know, year in and year out. And you can also judge, I'm not doing it justice, I apologize, but you can also judge the, the test results based on how a kid should be doing. So in essence, if between first grade and second grade, they're supposed to have a 15 point on this scale improvement, and they have a 22-point improvement, well, you can see that that kid, you know, did really, really well. One of the neat things about it, I think Lynn talked about, is it can maybe be that point where we can, you know, start to, you know, really rate teachers a little bit more, you know, so it's not just based on test scores, it's based on the improvements in the classroom. So, you know, that was pretty interesting, and, and, you know, I don't know, Lynn, if you have anything else to say on it, but it was pretty good.
In terms of the new testing, we do have an opportunity to pilot Smaravalance, which the state of Iowa is looking at to facilitate the application of the Iowa testing program. So we do have four schools that have volunteered for that in the spring, and so we'll have that adventure.
Yeah. I meant to say it earlier in the board salutes, but it should be noted that a third grader in the, in the Kennedy School tested out at the 97 percentile nationwide, I believe his name is Jackson Strelo. But the, but the, other than that, we mostly went through some pretty exhilarating policy changes that I don't think anybody, we already approved them earlier-
It was mostly wording, yeah.
In the consent agenda, there was nothing too exciting.
Alright, thank you. Okay, Mr. Barton, are we ready?
Okay, this is perhaps the longest motion in school district history under new business under Tab 9.
Stan said he would talk about it first.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thanks. Before Tom, just, you know, spend the next 15 minutes reading this resolution. Just a synopsis for the, again, for those of you by reviewing this at home or who are here tonight. It's basically a resolution asking the legislature and the governor in Des Moines to move forward as quickly as possible on setting allowable growth. Timelines are quickly approaching, in which we have to certify a budget, make decisions about staffing of both teachers, nurses, counselors, administrators, paraprofessionals for next year. As was sort of hinted to earlier, this was a decision that should have been made in Des Moines last legislative session for next year. We should know this information 18 months in advance. And we really are hoping that we can see some movement to set allowable growth at an adequate level and hopefully in a timely manner, so that we can begin to plan for next year with a realistic view of what the dollars will be, so that we don't have to necessarily affect programming for students or teacher-staff levels. And we would hope that they would not only set it for next year, but follow what is required of them by the law and set it for the following year as well.
It's, it's great that we're paying close attention to school funding. I mean, Paul Kurt comes to every one of our school board meetings because he's concerned with funding. We, we get phone calls from people because they're concerned about funding. We get editorials in the paper because they're concerned about funding. And, and they all, they bring up tremendous points. And so many of these things are, are a result of odd laws and, at a face level, some, kind of some crazy policies that get sent to us from Des Moines, not the least of which is the fact that we give them our money and we ask for it back. Well, I probably should read the resolution before we-
Yeah.
-get too deep into the weeds. I move that the Board of Education adopt the school funding resolution. School funding resolution, February 2013, now therefore be it resolved. Over recent years, the failure of the legislature to provide sufficient and increased annual funding to Iowa's school districts has a cumulative effect and significantly threatens the ability of Iowa's schools to meet the current needs and demands of improved student achievement. Be it further resolved to ensure appropriate annual educational funding and fiscal solvency, the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education resolves that to prepare for the 2013-14 and 2014-15 years, the legislature should, as statute dictates, approve allowable growth in the first 30 days of the 2013 legislative session. Therefore, the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education requests that the Iowa legislature set a 4% allowable growth rate for the 2013-14 and 2014-15 school years prior to consideration of educational reform measures. This request is based on, recent years, allowable growth has not kept pace with the educational needs of the district to support student learning. Iowa wants and needs to be a world leader, which will require a stronger educational program and funding to support that program. Iowa is failing to annually invest sufficient resources into this system. If education is truly the state's priority, then allowable growth funding should be prioritized and passed in compliance with Iowa law within 30 days of the presentation of the governor's budget. The allowable growth figure has a direct impact on the number- The allowable growth figure has a direct impact on the number of districts on the budget guarantee. Adequate allowable growth of 4% reduces the number of districts on the guarantee from 223 to 62. Consequently, the additional statewide property tax asking for the budget guarantee could be reduced from $33,637,871 to $3,982,365. Improving student achievement is not just about changing policy, it is about providing the necessary resources to strengthen our educational system. Recent across-the-board cuts, low-to-no allowable growth rates, and an increase in expectations have left school districts with little capacity to fund programs. Budgets must be passed and certified by April 15. Collective bargaining agreements have to be approved. Curriculum needs to be purchased, and staffing decisions need to be made. Districts must have funding information in order to plan for next school year. There are funds available to support 4% allowable growth. As of February 4, budget experts project the state treasury will end fiscal year 2013 with an $822 million surplus after cash reserves and emergency accounts are full. That ending balance will likely grow because it is based on a 3.3% growth projection, which is now projected to be at least 4%. Therefore, with 4% allowable growth established for 2013-14 and 14-15, we believe the funding would support the educational reform proposal. We support opportunities for teacher instructional leadership with full funding provided and prescription for implementation determined at the local level for flexibility in staffing, a reconciliation of the Legislative Services Agency estimate versus the Department of Education funding estimate. There must be a clear understanding of the cost to districts and appropriate funding provided to support these costs. Funding established to ensure the sustainability of the education reform proposal. Continued review and improvement of the current teacher evaluation system based on the Iowa teaching standards to include measures of student achievement. This positive move in educational reform that must include the development of a world-class curriculum with scope and sequence alignment to the statewide assessment. This resolution is approved by the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education in support of providing adequate current funding for Iowa's schools, requests 4% allowable growth is approved by the Iowa Legislature for 2013-14 and 2014-15, and conceptual implications of the education reform proposal to be signed by the Board President and Superintendent February 11, 2013.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to mention that under the leadership of the President of the Senate, Pam Yokum, Dubuque's own Pam Yokum, has indicated, I think these bills are out of committee, that they have, the Senate has put forth bills that would fund allowable growth at 4% for the next two school years, and the concern is that it could happen very, very quickly. The House obviously is, you know, going to be a different story. I just wanted to mention that, you know, Pam and a number of people aligned with our interests are in, you know, in Des Moines pushing for this, and I want to thank them for their efforts.
Yeah, it's an interesting thing. If you talk to the legislators, they themselves will talk about how this system is almost like a runaway train, that they themselves have a hard time riding. There's some other things I'm just going to throw out quick, and real briefly, Burz under my side. You know, our district's been very responsible fiscally, but we've got $30 million in the bank that we cannot spend because of our funding.
Lack of spending authority.
A lack of spending authority. We have to have contracts, we go into negotiations for contracts with the teachers' union, so, you know, we don't know that we're going to get any allowable growth. So, that forces us to offer zero. It forces the teachers' union to come back with a higher expectation, and makes everybody look like we've lost our minds, when in reality, we are hamstrung by the impairment of, we have a lack of knowledge of what we're going to have to spend. We give our money to the state, and they give it back to us, make sense out of that, as we're a taxing body as well. We have a funding formula that favors declining enrollment districts rather than increasing enrollment districts, because it's based on the previous year's enrollment. And ultimately, my favorite is the year that, it must have been seven, eight years ago, I just remember so vividly because the numbers were right in front of me, but for our district to, this goes back seven, eight, nine years, but for us to implement a 3% budget increase for our district, which most people would agree is reasonable, cost of living adjustment kind of a 3% budget increase, in order to do that, residential property taxes went up 1.5%. We like that. But industrial property taxes went up 5%, and commercial property taxes went up 15%. Unsustainable numbers and an unfair burden put on the private sector. So, the whole system is very difficult, and I guess I, as much as, not so much as whining, but I just want people to be aware that there are so many wrinkles and caveats with the school funding finance formula. This is my third term on the board, and I'm still figuring this out, and I'm a finance guy. So, it's, I do appreciate it. This resolution was written by, who wrote the resolution?
UAM.
Pardon?
UAM.
Yeah.
Okay, so from the Urban Education Network, so this is a resolution that many districts are going forward with, but it's about time that we really get serious about how we handle this funding situation. It frustrates everybody.
Tom, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's from the Iowa Association of School Boards, which...
From the IASB.
...advocate for school districts. If I could just put a little perspective on this, if Iowa's currently ranked 31st in the nation in per student spending, there was a time in the early 90s where we were eighth, and if you can think back to where our test scores in the early 90s, when we were eighth in per student spending as to where they are today, it's not that our students' scores have gone down, they have continued to increase. Many states have just surpassed us. They've also surpassed us on how they support education funding. In fact, if all states capped their spending, in other words, they didn't change their spending from last year, from this year till next year, we would need to see 16% allowable growth to get from 31st to 25th. So, we'd need 16% just to get to the national average, not to the head of the pack, but the national average, and these resolutions were simply asking for 4%. We know we can do, and I'm not here to say that throwing more money at it is the solution, but I think adequate spending is part of the solution. So, 4% is, gives us an ability to plan not only staffing, but program needs for students, and allows us to continue to improve the education in Dubuque.
What have we had the last few years?
0% and 2%.
Yeah.
So, and it's been a rough economic time, and I think there's somewhat understanding of those numbers, however, the current projections of budget capabilities at the state level would indicate that 4% in two years is a very reachable goal.
And it's flawed.
Yeah, as a board, I don't want to put any words in anybody's mouth, but I think most of us, if not all of us, are reformers, I think we'd love to see, you know, better ways to do it, but in the meantime, you know, it's flawed because, you know, we're sort of stuck and we can't do anything.
All right, any further discussion? It has been moved and seconded that the Board, has been moved and seconded to approve school funding resolution as read. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendation to deny district-to-district open enrollment application from Western Dubuque School District due to late filing after March 1, and does not meet good cause.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just quickly, I guess, this is a student who's asking to come now for this year, so they're not, this isn't an open enrollment, it's being filed now for next year, this student wants to come now, and we generally, even if it were an in-district open enrollment from one of our buildings to another, we would not encourage that because we think they need the consistency of that year, so that's the reason why we're recommending the denial of this request, and if the student wishes to fill out another form for next year and meet those deadlines, we would reconsider that.
Could you just catch the word about Great School?
I think that's right.
He says I'm in.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendation to deny district-to-district open enrollment application from Western Dubuque School District due to late filing after March 1, and does not meet good cause. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action for student number 580670 at this time.
Second.
Is there any discussion? It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action for student number 580670 at this time. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are now on to board member or administrative issues. Anybody?
Madam President?
Yes.
I have two issues I wanted to just run by the Board tonight. One is, we are in the, we're starting the process of doing the superintendent evaluation process, which has taken different forms over different years, and I guess one of the thoughts I have had is that, you know, typically in the past, we have filled out questionnaires, they've gone, they've got tabulated, we've reviewed those, but we haven't spent a lot of time as a group discussing those evaluations, or discussing thoughts about the superintendent review process, and I think it would be helpful to have some formal, in the superintendent review process, to have a time where we got together, and the Iowa law provides closed session for those meetings, that part of, to help improve that process would be to have a regular scheduled time, either twice a year or once a year, to discuss that evaluation of the superintendent, and I think that would make that process more meaningful to both the superintendent and to the process as a whole. So, you know, as we go forward with that, I think it would be, I would support doing that, and I don't think I've ever been to a meeting to do that, so, and that's one of our main chores as a...
We have that scheduled for March 4.
A closed session?
A closed session, just amongst the board members to do, isn't that correct, as on March 4? And then on March 11, we'll go into another closed session with Stan going over what, so we have our surveys that we're doing, and it's, so, we are going to do that.
Second.
That's how good an idea it was.
What else you got, George?
Is it that easy?
It's that easy.
I'd like to get a new floor at the senior high school gym.
Done, we'll do that for you, too.
The other thing, I guess, I would just like to throw out, has something to think about. I was at two events at senior high, you know, my children go to senior high, and over the last several weeks, one was the Wallard Senior High basketball game, the second was the eighth-grade orientation at senior high. Now, we have some parking issues up at senior high right now with the Dolls L Field renovation, but even with the temporary slots that we're losing, that we have lost, we're, senior high's parking lot is about 200 parking spots short of what Hempstead has and will have after their renovations. And the in-and-out of the senior lots, the pickup and drop-off in the morning and the afternoon, it's a very congested area, and I really think, you know, when we talk about school safety, people talk about guns, they talk about drugs and alcohol, they talk about fights, but we've had some very serious incidents over the years with accidents with kids and staff in parking lots, and the nights that I was up there, they were both weather, you know, raining, snowing, not enough spots, kids running all over, dark, and I'm just concerned that, I think there's a real safety issue up there with both the number of spots and the configuration of the in-and-out and the pickup and drop-off, and I think that would be, is, you know, we start finishing up on the Hempstead and getting that done, if we ever decide to look to senior high, one of the first things we have to decide is how the parking's going to work on a long-term basis, the in-and-out of the lots, the pickup and drop-off, and I think those are something that should rise in priority, and I would support taking a hard look at, so.
All right. Anyone have anything?
I would like to send out sympathy to the Ellen Eric family. Ellen was, has been a real good, strong leader in this community, and a good friend of mine as well, and he was going to be missed. He was a school board member, and had a lot to provide for the school board, also county supervisor, but his vast array of things that he did on boards in this community will be well missed, so anyway, I just want to send my sympathy to the family.
Well, I would like to recognize that Craig Byten has been elected to the District 9 for AEA on the Board of Directors. The Dubuque Community School District, we hold two seats, and we're allowed to vote in whoever, you know, we have a vote as to who applies, and Mr. Byten applied and was voted in today, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there anything you want to share with that?
No, I was asked kind of what, any kind of incoming agenda, and really, very simply, obviously, to learn better what AEA does and how they do it, but more importantly, to represent this district and ensure that the communication of, you know, what they do and how they do it is as transparent as possible. We, the pay-through is about $4.5 million, almost $5 million a year, that comes from our district alone to fund AEA, and I think that having a closer relationship with this board, I think this was just the best way to do it. So, I'm delighted, I'm looking forward to the opportunity, and hope I can bring information both ways between the two entities. Appreciate this board's support.
Good, thank you.
George brought up the eighth-grade orientation at senior, and it was really a wonderful experience. I'm sure Hempstead's is equally good. Just such a nice way that they put kids at ease right away, but I was thoroughly impressed with the open house at senior. That is, until everybody walked into the small gym for the activities thing, everybody slipped and fell down. 400 people all fell down at once when they walked in.
They were, they were all on the ground.
Dust all over them.
Any other board member, Stan, any issues you want to bring up? Preview of the next board meeting, which will be on February 25, so in two weeks, we are meeting.
Absolutely, well, and I, if you remember the last time I gave a board update, I misspoke and said that at this board meeting, we would go over the strategic plan, forgetting that there were two board meetings this month, one designated specifically for the purpose of discussing the strategic plan, so, just as you said, a reminder, it's not a month from today, it's two weeks from today, and the focus of that meeting will be the strategic plan that was presented in November, and sort of our current state of affairs with those issues, and where it is that we'd like to sort of move the dial, or move the district in those areas, so it should be an interesting board meeting.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
Molly, I know this was your debut at the gavel, and you did a very nice job.
Why, thank you.
We don't miss Donahue.
Yeah, well, he leaves the day with so many things to be read and repeated.
It's a little bit suspicious, isn't it?
There's a lot of meetings.
There's a lot of signatures after this meeting.
A lot of things I covered for him today.
He did a hell of a job.
Anything else? All right, we're adjourned.